They're ready.
This is a regular boarding, or regular meeting of this Board of Trustees for Springfield Township. I'm going to call the meeting to order, but we will begin as we normally do with a pledge of allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the real public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Price, do you want to call the roll?
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman?
Here.
Mr. Young?
Here.
Mr. DeLauro?
Here.
We're going to give everybody an opportunity that may be here to speak to us, to do so on any matter that is in front of us. If there's anything you see on the agenda right now that you want to speak to, I can give you that opportunity before we get to the item. Otherwise, there'll be an opportunity here in the meeting. Mr. DeLauro, I think you have some matters for us to consider.
Yes. I move to dispense with three minutes and approve the minutes to date.
I would second that.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. DeLauro?
Yes. I move to approve payment of bills and payroll as prepared by the fiscal officer, subject to audit.
Second.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. DeLauro?
Yes. I move to accept the resignation dated June 30, 2023, from Jessica Breath, effective July 14, 2023.
I would second that motion, and I know you're meeting with her tomorrow. You wish her the best from all members of the board, and our appreciation for the time that she was here helping us with zoning.
She did a good job.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. DeLauro?
Yes. I move to approve the adoption of the personnel policy and procedure manual effective August 1, 2023.
Second.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. DeLauro?
Yes.
And we appreciate Lee Ant's hard work on that personnel manual, and as we stumble across any issues, we'll deal with them.
Sure we will.
Okay. And I move to approve the attached resolution to proceed with a 1.5 mil replacement tax levy with an increase of .5 mil at a rate not to exceed 2 mils tax levy in excess of the 10 mil limitation for the purpose of the general construction, reconstruction, resurfacing, and repair of streets, roads, and bridges upon the entire territory of Springfield Township.
I would second that.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. DeLauro?
Yes.
Mr. Weinheimer, do you have any comment you want to make on our action?
This will be a new levy, I shouldn't say a new levy. It's actually, it's going to be a replacement to our existing levy that's been in place since 1994. So we're part of that levy of that 1.5 mil that's completely, that's in place right now. The 1 mil portion of that is effective at about 50%. So we're trying to bring our levies back up to date, add a little bit more money to our coffers so that we can continue to operate, take care of our roads as we have been doing the last couple of years. We've been pushing $450,000, $500,000 a year on the main road repairs. So we want to continue to be able to do that. Without this passage of this levy, we would probably have to stop doing those types of road repairs.
Yeah, I know we've tried in the last couple of years to really increase our effort to improve the roads in the township, and this levy really is necessary to continue in that, that action. I know over the years, we, we were just not able to put the effort in because of financial limitation.
That is correct.
And this, this year, we, we've made a much greater effort, and this levy is necessary to continue that. So, okay. Mrs. Chapman, I think you have some matters.
I move to approve the alternative tax budget for the fiscal year commencing January 1, 2024, Exhibit A, and authorize the fiscal officer to certify to the Summit County Fiscal Office.
I would second.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. DeLauro?
Yes.
This is essentially a report, Mr. Spiker, on our condition, and as our statutes require us to report to the county on our condition.
Yeah, very high-level projection of our condition, both at the end of this year and then even on into next year.
Okay. Very good. Mrs. Chapman?
I move to approve the supplemental appropriations budget for 2023, Exhibit B, as prepared by the fiscal officer, and submit to the Summit County Fiscal Office.
I would second that. There's, there's one item adjustment, right?
Yeah, we, we had missed it during the budget. It's for a payment of capital for a piece of equipment that we had made purchase of. This will be the third payment. You'll pass that later on in the, in the meeting here, but it's, it's a third payment of four.
On that mowing equipment?
Yes.
The third payment out of four?
Yeah.
So there's one more.
One more left next year. Yes.
Okay.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. DeLauro?
Yes.
I move to approve the payment to South Summit Council of Governments in the amount of $80,080 for the third quarter dispatching fees for 2023, and to be split between Fund 2081, 210, 360, 1017, in the amount of $49,569.52, and Fund Line 2281, 230, 360, 1017, in the amount of $30,510.48.
This is our obligation to maintain the dispatch service for both police and fire.
Yes, Mr. Young. We started with the, went to Green, went to the South Summit Dispatch Center early in the spring. We're very happy with the services, and it has a split between the police and fire for the dispatching, because they dispatch for both police and fire.
So this is a three-month period?
That's correct.
And I, I take it at this rate, this was a, a savings, a dollar savings from what we've been paying last year?
Yep, we are experiencing a significant cost savings to what we were paying before.
Okay.
We feel the services are very good. They're providing us, working with that dispatch center. And the advantage also with the centers that we're on the same radio channel with the Village of Lake More, so we're ever closer with our neighbors now.
In the Village of Lake More as well as Green and Coventry?
But we, we are on the same radio frequency with the Lake More Police Department.
Okay.
So Springfield Police and Lake More Police share a frequency or a channel, which helps us to work better together. But yes, Lake More Fire is also on it, Green Fire, Coventry Fire, and then New Franklin Fire and Police as well.
Did we have a second? Then I would second.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. DeLauro?
Yes.
I move to approve payment to Target Barn in the amount of $3,984.03 for 2023 ammo order to be paid from line 2081, 210, 318.
I would second that.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. DeLauro?
Yes.
I move to approve the payment in the amount of not to exceed $6,000 to Cyrus Chevrolet of Akron for half the cost of the engine replacement in unit 908, and to be paid from Fund Line 2081, 210, 323, 0904.
I would second.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. DeLauro?
Yes.
I move to approve the payment in the amount of $11,650.69 to B and C Communications for uplifting you, uplifting new unit 902, and to be paid from line 2221, 210, 430.
I would second.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. DeLauro?
Yes.
For our Parks Department, there's this matter before us, and I would have moved, I would move to approve the payment to Univest Capital in the amount of $5,793.91 to be paid from Fund Line 1,000-610-790-2000. This is the third installment for the Smith Co. Equipment Lease, and that happens to be that large mower. It's the one with the wings? Is that right?
No, no, no. This is the, the drag. This is what grooms the fields out at Jet Park.
Okay, okay. And this is the third installment of four installments?
Correct.
Okay, that's my motion.
I would second.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. DeLauro?
Yes.
Next, we have before us a question of condition of the property, 1140 Schwartz Road, parcel number 51-05, and question of the, whether a condition exists or if the property constitutes a nuisance. I'm going to move to continue this until we get a little more information before the board, including photographic evidence of what we're talking about.
Yeah, that would be fine. I just have one question. I know there's two gentlemen here. Are either one of you from Schwartz? No? Okay.
Okay.
Just making sure. Okay, thank you.
Had, had this been the subject of your visit, Chief, or? You know the guy?
No, I said, he said two gentlemen. He wasn't counting you.
I knew where he lived.
Mr. Young, I haven't been out there, but I'll check on this property tomorrow.
I mean, if we're going to have a special meeting on another matter, this could be
Added to it.
Yeah, added to it. We might as well. So it would be continued, because otherwise it would get a continued month.
Okay.
I would continue this matter for a special meeting, and at, at that time to receive a report from our zoning department with photographs, so we can see what we're talking about here. I, it looked like this is zoning violation, but it was presented to us as a nuisance matter.
Do you have a date for that?
What, what's the date?
July 27.
July 27, 5 o'clock.
5 o'clock.
So I move that we continue it to that date and time. Is there a second?
Second.
The, the next matter on our agenda is a public hearing on matters presented. Say it again?
Second.
Oh, do you, do we have to vote on these things?
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. DeLauro?
Yes.
The next matter on our agenda had to do with a hearing set for consideration of changes to the zoning code that would affect repairing setback standards and OC changes. Is there anybody here that intended to speak on that matter?
I don't know exactly what it is, but what are we talking about?
Okay, and here's what I'm going to do is, I, I'm going to have to direct any of those inquiries to have you look at what's been filed with us. We're not going to...
Well, I looked at that. I looked at that. Are we talking about 100-foot step setback? Is that?
Yes, yes.
100-foot setback from the, from the lake, and that's where you're allowed to build?
Yes.
Is that, is that the gist of what we're talking about?
That's the gist of it, yes. Now, fair to say that any existing structures that have been lawfully established at this point in time is not affected. We're, we're primarily dealing with...
Somebody comes in there and buys that 44 acres, whatever it is?
Correct.
And they can't build right on the lake. They got to go 100 feet back.
You know, I can't say, I want the opportunity to make sure I know exactly what the setback would be. And so...
That's what I'm asking.
I, and now, the, as you may know, what's been presented to the zoning commission and came on to us, has been presented by a citizen, Michelle Muir, and she wasn't able to be here this evening. I want to reset this matter and hope that she'll be here so that any direct question can be responded to accurately, and that would delay it by two weeks. But we're going to vote one way or the other on it.
I would, I would like to be involved in that, just because, you know, if it's more of a use of 100-foot step back, you know, I'm, you know, I, I just, I have reservations for that. I think somebody should be able to build, as long as they can build, you know. If she is trying to stop people from building over there, I'm against that, you know, because the only reason I'm against it is I have mine. Why can't they have their? Somebody buys that 44 acres and decides to melt it. They want to buy it. They want to put it right on the lake. No, I'm against it.
Okay, what, what I, to respond to, I would say, I have agreement with you. At the same time, I think there has to be some reasonable restriction when we talk about the health of the lake. And, and it's, I want to feel comfortable that I'm, I'm landing on what I consider to be reasonable. Because in, in discussion, and you'll, you'll remember maybe the, the zoning, or the Zoom session that we had with the lady who is in charge of Akron's reservoirs, one of the things that she said is that not only are we looking at effective treatment of algae in the lake, but she said, you ought to also look at your land use provisions, so that there's some reasonable restriction on property that, that drains into the lake.
And I'm all for that. I understand the local restrictions.
I want you to look at the specific ones, and that's, that's why I'm asking for two weeks more to have an opportunity to look at it. And we'll, it would be my motion that these proposed changes to the zoning resolution, both as to the adoption of repairing setback standards and the OC adoption of OC changes, be reset for hearing, let me say, the way I think the code, we're continuing the hearing until July 27 at 5 o'clock.
I know I just made enemies in the neighborhood with this.
I know you've always been worried about that.
She has, and I, and I agree with her on certain points of that, but, you know, you can't stop, you know, you can't stop Mr., you know, Dean Young providing 2 acres over there, building houses. Why wouldn't he build?
I'm glad you're looking after me.
Are you not lying? Why can't you have your?
Okay, but I do agree with the need to look at restriction. And, and I might say that one of the homes being constructed over there, the family came, and we had a discussion with them, and they accepted a reasonable restriction.
And also, you know, extending the sewer that's on Beach Road there, extending down there, and everybody ties into that Beach Road sewer. It doesn't have a septic system. That's a whole other can of worms on that whole dummy.
Let our record reflect that a citizen by the name of David Dees residing on West Parkway spoke at this hearing.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who wants to speak? We should have had you...
I have some more. You're not done though, are you?
Am I done?
You would have made that a public comment.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there anybody else speaking on, on what we had scheduled today as a preliminary look at proposal for zoning changes?
I have, I have zoning.
Okay, is there, let's restrict ourselves right now to, is there anybody else that was here to speak on the subject of zoning? Okay, if not, I should ask you to come to the, because those who may care to listen to our, or see our meetings are eager to hear what David Dees has to say.
Well, don't we have to vote on this first?
Yeah, I think we do. Now, I don't know if my two colleagues have anything they want to say on this. We're going to...
We're carrying it, continuing.
I move to continue the hearing on the proposed zoning changes until Thursday, the 27th of July at 5 o'clock.
I would second that.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. DeLauro?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Dees, you have the floor.
David Dees, 1184. You know what my address is, right? Right now? West Parkway.
That's right there now.
I have a couple of things. We talked the last meeting about the valve out there and who's responsible for it, and it was, it was clear that the, the Township trustees are responsible for that valve and opening and closing and raising and lowering of the, of the lake. Okay?
To the extent that that...
That's cast in stone.
That can done, be done, yes.
I mean, God has something to do with it by the fact that he hasn't had it rain here in a while, you know, and I, and I realize all of that. Looking at that, I also know, and it became prevalent, that Goodyear wants nothing to do with this lake anymore. They don't care about the 2 feet of lake that they signed agreement on back in 1953 on cooling their tires that they don't make anymore. So I propose that this trustees make an amendment that part of that money that we're going to spend on the lake, eliminate that valve. Eliminate it. We don't need it. We have a dike down at the end that will control the level of the lake. We do not need that valve. Goodyear doesn't want the valve. We don't need the valve. Eliminate it. Also, that's my first thing. The second thing is, is we talked about a retention pond. We have money in the budget to put in a retention pond. I'm done waiting for Summit County to do anything. I haven't heard anything back from, from the EPA on what they're going to do to Summit County, if they do anything to Summit County. I don't know what they're going to do to Summit County. We have money allotted to put in a retention pond for the Sawyerwood Septic Systems. We were supposed to get, we were supposed to get by you, Ted, some...
Oh, yeah.
Pricing on that.
Oh, we have the pricing. We already done all this.
So we need to, so we need to go ahead and approve that contract and get that started before we lose this summer. Okay? All right. And my last thing was, I was looking at the budget, the entire budget that we got from the, whatever, the free money.
Yeah, but it's not free.
It's not free. It's not free.
We borrowed it.
We borrowed it, and we're going to, we're going to pay it back individually.
We borrowed it from ourselves.
The township doesn't have to pay it back as far as the township, but the township people are getting it. But what I was looking at was, is the one thing, and I'm sorry that I'm directing this at you, Chief, but we bought two patrol cars that are going to chase people at high speeds. Is that, am I correct in assuming that?
I don't know what you mean by that.
We have a pursuit policy, so we really limited our pursuits.
We have a pursuit, now we, and now we, and now we've, we've, now we've purchased a specialized car for pursuit. Is that correct?
No, we just, we just purchased two standard Dodge Durango police package vehicles.
Oh.
There's nothing specialized.
I thought that on the, on the, on the thing that said...
I think in their context, they actually call it pursuit.
Yeah, we have to buy the pursuit vehicle. It's not the civilian model.
Yeah.
It's a standard police package vehicle.
The only reason I have a problem with that is I know my wife goes out, I go out, and somebody's speeding. I, I don't think we should pursue anybody. Let them go. We'll catch up with them. We got a radio, you know?
Yeah, we're reluctant to pursue anybody. We've really restricted our pursuit policy.
Thank you.
The vehicle's just called that, and it just...
It was called that in the budget.
It's a police vehicle. It's not a pursuit yet.
It's got heavier brakes, heavier suspension, because of the...
It's not a normal police car.
It is a normal police car.
It is a normal police car? Okay.
Yeah, that's true.
So we, we clarified on this, on that. Now, my only other question was, is why did you need the extra money for that? Did our taxes did not cover that?
Everything is costing so much more, from fuel to repairs. Everything is costing us so much more, so we need some assistance from time to time to keep a adequate fleet of vehicles on the road. That's why I requested that the Board of Trustees would help me with a couple of police vehicles. The officers, here's what we've done. We've, we've put more officers on the road, which adds more protection for our citizens, which costs more in tires, oil changes, and brakes, and more wear to vehicles. So we're providing more service, but we're using more vehicles to do that. So the goal was to, rather than have a small fleet of vehicles and increase the miles on those fleet of vehicles, that we'd have more vehicles so that we'd get more longevity out of the cars that we had, so that they would pay for themselves in the long run. That's our goal, is put more cars on the road. So that's why we asked, I asked the Board of Trustees if they were willing to purchase two Dodge Durangos, which is a standard police vehicle for us.
I apologize for calling you on the carpet.
Yeah, no problem. Hope I answered your question.
Yes, sir. As usual, we ask you to state your name and where you reside.
Steve Phillips, 1154 West Parkway. Going along with what David said about the Goodyear valve, my question is, oh, I support his recommendation. Goodyear is not in production anymore. Why do we need that valve? We have a dam, the weir that handles overflow. So if that's the case, why do we need the valve? But before that, I had a question, is who is in charge of the valve?
I would say the, the answer is the valve actually physically belongs to the Goodyear Tire and Rubber Company.
Okay. Who opens and closes it here?
And because their industrial activity has changed over the years, that they don't really rely on draining water off the lake for their factory purposes, that we've just taken the responsibility to control its use. Is that a fair statement?
Okay. Who has taken that responsibility?
The Board of Trustees. I mean, and through our, primarily through direction to our assistant, Mr. Weinheimer.
So then, basically, there's a responsibility, because the left hand doesn't know what the right hand's doing, what the middle hand's doing. You all have control and authorization of this valve, but Kelly could turn it on and not know anybody else would know that, or Joe could say, turn it off, who knows what. And then the lake goes down by how many feet or how many inches. You need, I would suggest, a person to be responsible for the valve if you don't take Mr. Dees's recommendation to shut it down completely, which I think is the best option. One person, here or Ted, needs to be the person, you know, live or die with that responsibility for that valve. So in the, in the fall, you're going to lower it down because the heavy winter's coming, and somebody from... and somebody forgot it. Who forgot it? Well, there's only one person who's in charge of that valve. You can't point fingers, it's accountability, and you need accountability. I mean, unless you're all going to say it's our fault, and then I think you're lacking leadership of township trustees. There needs to be one person responsible for that valve.
The valve is closed, right, Ted?
Yes.
Didn't we just...
I hope it's closed. You can't hide another fucking gun that much lower.
Well, but it is closed, I mean, we may be aware of that.
But this could be a moot point if you go ahead and shut the valve.
Move it, we don't need that valve. The river's over there, it means Goodyear, we don't need that valve. We don't need it.
Last month, Ted mentioned that Lake Moore needs to improve their infrastructure. Is there any updates? Are we knowledgeable about that? Or as a partner on this lake, do we have not some access to what their, your seps are to improve their infrastructure and what they're putting into this lake?
We don't have any control over that, but, but we understand that they're moving forward and, and I can't give you specifics on it because we can't, we really can't control it, but they were under order by the EPA to improve their infrastructure. I understand that they're obtaining loan funding to deal with the primary problem that had been a main pipe in the transmission of sewer that had ruptured, that they're working to replace that. And the other thing is that they have been conducting inspection of their storm sewer pipes and with plans to make the corrections that are necessary. That's the best that I can tell you now.
Well, planning to do something is wonderful. I came from Akron, they plan to do, redo their combined sewer systems for over 20-some years. So, planning to do something and actually doing it is two different things. Rumors I heard was the lake lower level goes down because if it's too high, it can backfeed into their storm sewers and then get tangled up with their sanitaries, and when that gets shipped to Akron, their rates go up. So, if the lake water's down, that solves Lake Moore's problem. Doesn't help anybody on the, on the lake though, as far as recreation. So, is there a rumor? I don't know, it seems to be, makes sense to me so far. Why is that level going down? Why is the pump always on or off, or nobody knows, because there's no accountability for that valve? So, I guess if you don't want to hear me yelling at, you know, the trustees all the time, we need to find out what's going on with Lake Moore and, you know, there's no harm in going, say, hey, what are you guys doing? Or else I'm just going to keep asking you guys. And I'll be, you know, you'll get tired of me, but I'm retired, I got plenty of time.
We invite you to return.
Pardon me?
We do invite you to return.
Oh, I will.
In your email about Lake James, the bridge, it is significantly lower. My husband went down there and looked, and if you look at the bridge, it is lower.
Is that spring fed?
I'm sorry?
Is that spring fed?
I think it is, I think according to my husband it is.
Okay.
You had mentioned the Lake James.
There's also another pond farther down on Canton Road, too.
That's Crystal Lake, it's extremely low.
That's, yeah, that's real bad, I noticed that.
And then I was just out at West Branch, and it's horrible. I'm not making excuses, I'm just saying that it's like everywhere.
Nemisole and the Portage Lakes must be sealing our water then, because those levels are good.
Oh, you're talking about James Lake?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So, it's not, that's, I mean, I mean, it's...
It's, it doesn't have a spring underneath it, is that spring fed?
It's more of a runoff, yeah, that's right, runoff stream. It's all, well, it's something.
I just, I didn't know your answer when you emailed me, so that's why I asked Danny about it.
Well, I'm not a, it might not be the right term, hydrologist that knows about water and whatnot, but I'm sure if the level wasn't that low in the, in the fall, the drop would not be impacting the lake levels as severely as it is now. So, we got to look early in late fall and winter what you're going to do, and that can be controlled with the weir. You can stack your boards up there, get the level up high, if it's not affecting the storm sewers in Lake Moore. I think that's, that's a key word, is that storm sewer. Also, last month, you mentioned that the 1903, I think a lawsuit, I emailed everybody this too, last June 13th, I had all the trustees and Ted and some neighbors. You mentioned about the 1903, there was a lawsuit, and later on, there was county engineer had documents dictating the level of the lake. I requested those, and I haven't, nothing, Kelly gave me a response as to the money spent on the lake, but I haven't received nothing else.
Why don't we run him these copies? I mean, they're, they're primarily historical. You know, this is, this is a problem, Mr. Phillips, it's, it's a hard one, and over time, you know, was frustrating, at least I, I found it frustrating, we had, I mean, over the years that I was on the board, it used to be that, that in order to accommodate the boaters, and we would actually have some effort to lower the lake in the fall, you know, so people could take their boats out supposedly, and then in the spring, to put in boards so that the level would be raised. And then, because of the conditions in Lake Moore, we ended up in a back and forth, and I think, you know, Mr. Delora in particular can, can tell you about the kind of back and forth that we had trying to, Lake Moore would be concerned about the backup and flooding of homes over there. We had periods where homes in Lake Moore would flood because the lake level was so high, and their system, of course, would back up. And we go through that period of trying to be prognosticators about what's the weather going to do? Is it going to rain? Are we going to get a lot of, I mean, this board really is in accord with the idea of there's a lake level that was set that we kind of don't have control over because it was legally set. Keep the pipe shut, keep the, keep the weir level at, at what it was set. The county, because there was complaint and argument about it, the county engineer was engaged to come over and put a mark on that weir as to what is the proper lake level. I think it's arguable whether that is the proper lake level or not, but it's not for me to say.
Oh, who is?
And the thing is that that lake level, I, I'm not sure you guys would be satisfied with the level. It's, it's basically no boards, right?
Other than what, what's there now.
Okay.
And normally, normally it would be, when I started, it would be at that level in the winter, which is the maximum lake level allowable by that court.
That's, that's not what we're asking.
Well, I'm giving you some information.
Wait a minute, wait, but so, so everybody knows what you can do, let one person at a time speak, and we'll listen to what you have to say. Do we ever nod?
We're asking for the GPS, this is the 10:24 of the level.
So, are you listening to me? And I will explain it.
I will.
As I did when we were out there cleaning up trash. So, right now, with the way we're set, with the board that's in there, you'll see that there's angle iron and stuff on it, that board is the maximum level allowable by that court. That is the survey that was done by the county to help us set that.
Where's that paperwork?
Yeah, she's running a...
She's running on copies for you, okay? So, with that, and now, what, what used to be done, what used to be done is that in the winter, that's what they would allow the level to go down to prior. Then in the spring, they would add a two by four on top of that, basically three and a half inches. So, immediately, as soon as we added something on there, we are in...
Violation.
Violation of the court order immediately. But we've tried to work with that over the years, and then it became very contentious, as Dean said, Joe can explain, with Lake Moore, because we have at that point allowed the lake to be higher than the level that it was allowing.
Hey, I would like, I would like finality to it. It would make our life easier, okay?
If the red mark is the mark, and that's the mark, get rid of the valve, get rid of, you know, here we go, that's the mark, we're lower than the mark, okay, God, just try to take some water out of that ridge, that's fine, the energy and everything, you know, that's the mark. Never did you say a GPS number on what that mark is supposed to be.
I don't think, have you ever had it overflow at the weir?
Say again?
At the weir, the dam. Has it ever overflowed?
Yes, it has.
Oh, yeah, it flows, yeah.
So, you pull the, the boards and...
Yeah, but the board that we're talking about is like...
It's stationary, we, we do that, that board is built in there to be stationary. Once it gets that, that's the key for the dam maximum.
Well, that board's...
The other boards we would move in now.
But right now, it's, it's on a concrete pad and the water is all dried up, and so it's like six inches below the pad.
Yeah, it's, right now, if you look at it, that doesn't even care.
So...
I mean, a couple of weeks ago, I went there and walked in the outlet.
Right.
There was no water.
So, now, with the high level, you mentioned all Lake Moore was getting flooded. What's causing that now? How's the storm, the storm surge, is that what you could like to...
I didn't say that it's happening this year.
Right.
It's not happening this year, no.
But when it did happen, where, how did they get flooded?
How did they get flooded?
Because my understanding, the EPA, they just fixed their sanitary outlet, outlet, so that should be, to the pump house should be good, right?
Yeah, I'm not saying that there was flooding within this year or last year.
Right.
It's just that we had years that it was a contentious relationship because it was, they were over here pulling out boards. We were put, we would put the boards in to accommodate and to try to, you know, make life better for recreational purposes.
Right.
And we had a conflict between the people who lived on the north side of the lake and the people who lived on the south side. They were adamant that take the boards out and affect.
So...
We had an incident where somebody came over and, you know, we considered it a criminal act.
So, if I understand this correctly, then, the higher the lake level, negatively impacts Lake Moore.
Yes.
Because it would somehow go up into their storm sewers and combine with their sewers. So, the lake level's down to benefit Lake Moore.
Correct. You mean presently?
Yes.
I don't think that that's the reason.
They have it not fixed.
The present reason, I, I don't think presently it's down because we did anything to try to help out Lake Moore.
But a high lake level would impact them negatively, until they get their infrastructure fixed.
All you have to do to prove that is look at the Akron...
Do you want to talk? Why don't you come up here?
All you got to do to prove what you're saying is look at the Akron flow on the meter that's main that's leaving Lake Moore. And you will see that we got over the, that's why they have an EPA mandate to fix all their crap down there, because over the last 20 years, their flow has gone up. So, they had an engineer with, with...
Gilbert.
... everything else, and they showed that they have illicit flow from their storm sewer to their, to their sanitary sewer.
You know...
When I say they have illicit flow from their storm sewer to their sanitary sewer, they also have illicit flow from their sanitary sewer to their storm sewer. Those are the videos, okay? I took them.
Okay, but I, I don't know what your point is. We already know that they're, they're under EPA order, right? And so, it's been the hands of the EPA to force them to take some action, and they're in control of the timetable that they're, that they're forcing the infrastructure.
I'll be dead by 10...
What's that?
I'll be dead by then. Oh, I mean, I'm just talking about Akron took 20, 25 years.
You, you look pretty vibrant to us.
I know how...
So...
Also, um...
All about money and brands.
Well, we have not intended to lower the lake to benefit them in the last 12 months that I know of.
Well, it would certainly take any suspicion of this board and Ted if that Goodyear valve was locked, or not locked, but sealed.
Locking it don't help because they've cut the lock down.
I know, so that's why, correct me, if you just seal that, lock it shut, and that way, we can't say, what are you guys doing? It's sealed, it's locked, here's an inspection, you guys come and look. That way, any excess wire goes through the dam, the weir.
We have to get the property, we don't own the property.
Now, on a different note, with the Sawyerwood retention pond and the problems in Lake Moore, Steve Beatoz at Akron Water Renewed, I was talking to him, and he mentioned that the EPA wants them to do like some pond, retention pond additions at the end of the big tunnel there in Cogga Street, because they think that the case it over, overflows, blah, 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 which it hasn't in a year and a half. He said they have $25 million earmarked for that. Steve said he would rather see most of that money go to more viable environmental projects that could assist Peninsula, Sawyerwood, and Lake Moore. So, I got his number if you guys want to use it. He says the Ohio EPA is on board with doing that, we got to just convince the feds to get on board.
The thing that's good about that is the effect, it's going to, it's a lot less money for Akron, okay? So, Akron's all in, all right, if you talk to the right people and get it going, Akron's all in, rather than doing another tunnel, another big dig, all right, because they don't really want to do $14 million, they would rather put that money through here and get the EPA off the back. That, that's a fact.
I'm very wary of it.
Oh, okay.
I have his name unknown, I, I don't have one.
I'll give you my number, you can text it.
I think, okay, I'll get the text, I'll text it to you. So, that's it.
Thank you, Dave.
That's it.
Steve.
Oh, you're Steve.
You're Steve.
Don't call me Dave.
Steve, please, we, at least in my...
Thank you.
Well, that's not...
Nope, okay. 20 seconds go by and nobody speaks, I move that we adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Delora?
Yes.